Welcome, everybody. We call this meeting the floor.
I'm waiting for the TV to call in.
I don't know whose phone number is that.
I'll be tonight.
Congratulations to the five of the United States of America and to the Republicans, which stands one nation under their God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no idea. They're probably looking for it. That's why they're answering.
I don't think we need a motion for that.
It'll keep going off this.
Did you decide?
I thought it was called.
Off the entire call.
You want to try to file for my entire call?
Or I think you'll put it out there. I guess if you all would do. Okay, you ready for a roll call?
Yeah, let's do a roll call.
At least it's quiet.
We'll do a roll call though. Roll call for ten minutes, sorry.
Okay, Commissioner Beulah.
I am here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
I'm here.
All right, Commissioner Ruth.
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Speaker. Commissioner Terry.
Welcome. Okay, approval of minutes for October 11th.
I have a few edits and notes.
Yes, and I did fix the, on the commissioner's minute at the very end, I made a change so it re. It was determined that this is the city manager's evaluation in November. They discussed it, said it was determined it would be allowed December 1st at 3:00 P.M.
December 1st?
Yes, I fixed that because it was wrong. It's December 1st.
It's gonna be Monday and now we.
Yeah, it'll be Monday, the first meeting in December.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
I have a question on page four, at the very top.
Okay.
It just says the, the city will continue doing quarterly events for the Moundtown Association.
Yes, that was something that was said. We could, we probably need to.
specify for.
Oh, quarterly reports, okay.
Okay, I was gonna say, can we specify which events we're doing.
I was confused at that because it said events, then she said reports, and then.
And these would be reports to Department of Commerce?
Yes.
That was my main question. And then I have a couple more to add to.
I was just gonna volunteer.
I was gonna go as soon as she went to her report. Well, she's answered it.
Yeah, Monday just said no further.
Good for you.
Okay, all righty, no courtesies, no proclamations. We'll move on to board and Commissioner Robertson. We'll begin with Commissioner Speaker.
Sure, nothing to report. I'm trying to remember. I missed the meeting if it's coming up, I'm sorry. But nothing to report right now.
We had a good presentation from Sway Mountain last, or last meeting. That was really helpful, just a lot of information.
Awesome.
Commissioner Beulah?
A library will meet Wednesday, November 19th at 1:00 P.M. in the library meeting room. That's all I got.
Commissioner Ruth?
I was not at the City County, City County Health Board meeting, but you have something to tell?
Yep, we had our regular meeting. Apparently by agenda, they did have one septic system variance that was granted to allow a smaller tank than typical. And then the sanitaryian is take, or has already taken her exam. She was taking it all the last day. So we have a. See if she has. Which is good because Barb is given her indication that she's done at the end of the year.
Done the training at the end of the year?
Done with her contract services.
Okay, that's Eva's majesty, right?
Yeah.
I, it'll be Wednesday.
Thank you. The Park and Rec Board will be meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 P.M. at the Pacific Center. And then I do have a report from Commissioner Terry. She's unable to be with us tonight, but she wanted us to know that regarding the Central Montana Foundation, the grants promoted at the October 28th meeting, which included a grant of $4,855 to the Friends of Lewistown Public Library for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library Project in Fergus County. $5,000 went to Lewistown City and Parks Recreation for the Deutermont Complex for the tree replacement project. $1,600 to SMDC for transportation expenses for rural students to attend an interactive aerospace industry event at the Fergus County Center for, the Fergus Center for Performing Arts. They will have reps from NASA, the European Space Agency, and MSU along with local manufacturers involved with the aerospace industry. And there was a new permanent endowment which was approved through the Friendship Lodge, number 37, for one for scholarships and another for building maintenance and operating expenses. That is all they had for the year. And then any questions for any of the commissioners regarding their reports this evening? And we'll move on to the city manager report with city manager Holly Phelps.
This upcoming week, just a reminder, the city offices will be closed on December 1st. Again, many of our departments can't be closed and those that have, you know, public works does have people on call during those holidays. We have seen recent upticks in spam and phishing attempts. So if you get weird emails, don't open them. Feel free to reach out to me or send it, forward it on to me and we make sure that they're getting reported to our IT company so that they can put up the necessary firewall, things like that. It is upcoming year again where I'm going to ask question if they want a holiday open house. I don't need an answer tonight, so please be thinking of that. This is not ordinance. We are working on finalizing the flyers and handouts that will go on all of the properties that are affected by the recent ordinance changes. Thanks to the radio and the newspaper, we've got lots of great questions and stuff from people in those areas already and we will continue to get that information out there utilizing both the radio, the newspaper, social media, and those hangers and plumbers. And I don't know if you guys have noticed, but recently there were barricades installed at Second and Broadway. The City of Montana did do bridge inspections recently and noticed that there was some structural issues with that bridge. There has been in the past, but this time those issues really were more significant along the curb lines. And so they did request that the sidewalk and the curving lanes be blocked in the county. Fergus County is responsible for all bridges. And so those letters and correspondence were sent to the county and the county road. We did install the barricades for their request. The other option was unfortunately to shut down the whole road. So stay tuned for more information. We continue to work with those folks and that bridge has been slated for replacement in the near future. And then if you didn't notice, the Quicker Recorder had a great update on the election. On her Facebook page, pretty much all of our words were hovering about 25% of the ballots returned. Again, residents have until 8:00 P.M. tomorrow to get their ballots returned to the courthouse. There's a box on the second floor, so.
Can you make a note to send the flyers to the library also for the.
Places we plan on?
Thank you.
And then in your emails, you'll see the budget expenditures and revenues. We emailed them thinking that we could go away from paper copies all the time, but I did have Nikki make a few copies. So if you want a paper copy, feel free to take that tonight. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment, this is regarding non-agenda items. So if you have a comment regarding a non-agenda item, just state your name and your address. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. This is for acknowledgement of the claims that have been paid from October 16th through the 31st of this year. Any questions regarding the agenda? Commissioner Ruth?
Just a point of information, page two, 57984, Century Companies to, do something with the Shobbs parking lot? And Allen Rehab, what?
Yep, so Shobbs had their parking lot repaved, that city alley behind it. We actually took care of that all the way down to the streets. It was not draining and had large potholes down by the American Legion. So as part of that project, we partnered up with them to pave the rest of the alley.
And then on page three, number 57990, Department, the Division of Criminal something, that's transactions?
Yep, so when.
With dispatch.
Yep, so the police department, when they, you know, an officer radios in to have the criminal history, ram on somebody, maybe they have a pullover or something like that. They do, do these searches and there is a cost associated with each time they run them. And so dispatch does that for all of the areas and all of those folks that they provide services for. So Fergus County, Bitterland, and Judith Basin County and all of the reporting agencies. They do this.
Just wanna make sure, the code MPF, multi-purpose facility?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the one down.
Formerly known as the Snatch.
Which will forever be the Snatch Shack, but some people say no.
Any other questions regarding? Commissioner Beulah?
Well, one would be 57974. It would be the first page.
What page?
First page.
Okay.
And then 57976. Is that for one furnace?
So the advanced electric, those are actually for pumps. And that was for one pump and pump controllers that were done there. And the ambient H2O is for a RAS pump and that's a single pump.
Is that in, in the?
With water?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that one was one we, it takes about four months for us to get those pumps. So it was previously.
And then the, the one with the all-weather check, the 57974?
Uh huh.
The furnace, is that for one furnace?
Yes, that's the, I believe there's just one furnace. So that's at the multi-purpose facility. At the pool, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. So do we have a motion?
I move we approve the claims that have been paid from October 16th, 2025 to October 31st, 2025 in the amount of $140,000. 140, $797,000 and 29 cents.
We have a motion from Commissioner Beulah and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Do we have any other questions regarding the consent agenda for the city? If you all in favor, raise your hand. We will be moving on to our regular agenda this evening. It's item number one, discussion and action on approving and amendment to agree to an agreement with Jill Flament regarding the remainder of track one of the remainder. Am I saying that correctly?
What?
My name is. Number three, minor subdivision, city manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, so you can see in your packet, the letter that we received from Chris Birdwell regarding this ask. It is, the ask is to amend a previous agreement that was entered into in 2015 that basically delays the annexation of that lot. As you can see, both the amendments and the original agreement are in your packet. The previous agreement really was contingent on the ownership of the property staying with the Flamands and their heirs, not expanding the use of the water there and not further developing the property. The amendment that we're discussing today really is asking us to continue that same agreement with a potential new buyer. And prior to receiving this, the plan had been working with a potential buyer on this. And so Doug's letter regarding this property was also included. We have a whole lot of people regarding the issue. Doug is online, Chris Birdwell, who drafted the agreement, and RJ Patterson, who I believe probably represents the buyer, the potential buyer. Doug. So those are who interested parties are in mind.
Do you really wanna just start with like one through Mr. West and then Mr. Birdwell? If you can just keep comments, kind of give us an overview and then the commission has. Okay, very statements from him? Okay, all right, we'll start with Mr. West, city attorney.
All right, so my view of the, the amended agreement is essentially, it's just an assignment for all intents and purposes that just continues this restriction for any potential annexation to this property. And so, again, it is asking to continue that restriction for any, any new property owners that'd be involved here. Doug Osterman, again, is online as well. He did provide an opinion to the, it was Eric Nan Phillips there, the prospective buyers. Again, this letter is incorporated in that packet. In reviewing that letter, I, I believe his approach is correct. We just spent a lot of time and effort implementing the Lewistown Plan, the 2024 Lewistown Plan. That is required under law, the Montana Land Use Planning Act that was passed last year. So with this opinion from Doug, that is going to be, I think, the baseline for the city in moving forward with issues like this. Because again, we have this new Montana Land Use Planning Act that is going into effect that, that we're required to follow. I think the best approach would be to follow the 2024 Lewistown Plan. Now, my understanding from working with Mr. Osterman regarding these properties, they, the property at issue is a tier five development here. Under our plan, the Lewistown Plan, that is one of the lowest priorities for development. And so the reason I think that's important for this consideration is that the concern from the current owners, they, they think, and Mr. Birdwell will certainly provide a much better telling of their position on this. But bottom line, there's concerns about the saleability of that property. It's, you know, 56 acres, there's concerns of, of why would a potential buyer purchase this plot of land if they are potentially gonna be annexed? Well, you know, I, I guess that, that's part of the market. That's my response to that. It's up to the buyer, or up to the buyers and sellers to do their due diligence in their own property transactions and figure out what's right based upon all these factors. But going back to Lewistown, you know, there's concerns here too. What sort of precedent might this create? And will other developers want to take the same approach? Now, going back to, again, the Lewistown Plan and Mr. Osterman, I think he can explain this as well too about the tiers. The other properties at issue, these other plots that are, that are laid out in the agreement, those are tier four designation of the Lewistown Plan. I believe that's like the, the one, lots one, two, and three. But regardless, there's, the, the big, the biggest parcel is the least amount of concern for development according to our plat, our map, our development map that was worked on by everyone. The other ones that were already annexed, I believe, were, those are under tier four. So from the city standpoint, I guess I would take that into your, into consideration when moving forward on deciding what to do here. I, I just want you to think about how this could affect other potential developers in the future and then how this really affects the buy, the potential buyers and the current property owners.
Any questions for Mr. West at this time? Hear from Doug with them?
Doug, are you available online?
Yeah, excuse me, yes, I didn't hear the question though.
So no question, we just wanted to hear what you have to present on the issue tonight.
Well, you know, I guess. Pardon me?
No, go ahead, I'm sorry. Keep going, Doug.
Again, from my perspective, this, there, this property, I think it's really important to think about the fact that there's the, there are several parcels involved with the Flament property. According to my calculations, about 67 acres is outside our service area, meaning the city at this point in time and over the next 20 years has zero interest in, in annexing that property. And as it stands right now, it'd actually be against state law for the city to annex that largest of the parcels. Now, there are two parcels that are already in the existing city, so annexation isn't even a question for those two parcels. It's a matter of really now, under our land use planning plan, under state law, it would really be up to this, the property owner to determine if they wanted to develop those properties and when. Now, from my vantage point, as Tyler said, those two are in a lower tier. We've got quite a bit of land within the city that are in tier one and that's the existing city where the sewer and the water are all ready to go. So when I look out the next 20 years, I really see our priority being to infill development, as we say in the plan. And that infill development is primarily driven by having existing sewer and water and other available city services readily at hand. And by and large, annexations, if, if there is gonna be an annexation close to the city, unless you all see that different, I would see it as, as the property owners would have to petition the city to annex. In these two parcels, they're constrained by access. Castle Butte Road is, is on the, on the one end of these properties. It drops off dramatically geophysically from the road. The only access is from below off Paper Trail Drive, which again, if a land and, if a land transaction occurs from the Flamands to someone else, the person who owns the land that Paper Trail Drive is on is in the driver's seat to determine if there's gonna be access to these parcels. So I guess that's a long way of saying, I think that these parcels are a long ways away from, the, the two parcels that are even in the city are a long ways away from being developed and proposed to develop. And a lot of it has to do with who owns them. So if the new owner of the property is not willing to develop those properties, I really don't think it would be a priority over the next 20 years for the city to develop those two big parcels of land, which, which it sounds like two parcels, but they're six acres each. So, you know, we're talking about really rural properties anyway. So the reason they're in the city is the artifact of 10 years ago when the city brought water to the properties. And other, other than that, these, these, it would be hard to distinguish these two parcels from other rural areas that are not in the service area. So from my vantage point, unless the plan changes and there are reviews every five years required by state law, these parcels are essentially not going to develop in, in the next 20 years. And certainly the large parcel outside the service area isn't even in question. There'd have to be a lot of negotiations with the county as well to, to put that property in the service area at this point. So when I looked at the proposed amendment to the agreement, I see it as almost a zero-sum game. If it adds predictability for the property owner or the future property owner, great. But in terms of this city priority, I see it as, as kind of a neutral action that you would be taking.
Thank you.
Sure.
Birdwell, thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Miss Day. My name is Chris Birdwell. I think I've met most of you. I'm sitting next to RJ Patterson. As RJ mentioned, he is the realtor to Jill from Flament. Jill could not be here this evening, she's in North Dakota. If I could give you about one minute of history, some of you who may have been involved in the 2014, 2015 timeframe, others of you weren't. What happened? The city asked Doug and Jill Flament for an easement because the city needed to get water up from the airport area toward Castle Butte Road. Doug and Jill Flament gave the city an easement so that the water, water line could cross right through the bigger parcel, what I'll call the 56-acre parcel. The city said to Doug and Jill, would you like to tap in to that and get city water? They moved the day that they said, yes, we, sure, we'll take city water. Because shortly after receiving city water, they were informed that they were going to be annexed. And then litigation ensued. That 2015 agreement, where that came from was, the city was trying to annex the 56-acre parcel. Flamands sued to stop the annexation. They battled back and forth for a year or so. I remember well, I remember talking to Doug Flament and his attorney Jim Hobble with a bit about it. The parties got tired of litigating and so they settled by agreeing that, okay, Flamands, as long as you own the property, we won't annex it. And I'm only speaking, the only property that I'm concerned with or that Jill Flament is concerned with is the 56-acre piece. The smaller parcels, there are five of them that Doug mentioned, that are closer to Castle Butte Road, no concerns there. If the city. If the city uh, next year or five years down the road decided to annex those, that's not our issue. It's that fifty-six acre parcel. And Jill and Doug Flument anticipated, I think, that they would live there for a long time, and it wouldn't be an issue. Well, very sadly, Doug Flument died. Uh, and so Jill was not up to living there by herself. Um, they go to sell the property and they learn that they had created quite an albatross. Um, buyers are not going to buy a fifty-six acre parcel that has the potential to be annexed unless they have one thing in mind, and that is to turn the fifty-six acre parcel into a hundred and twelve acre parcels. And that's not what that piece should be used for. It's a beautiful piece of property that looks nice, of course, was on it. It's a beautiful green space that's a compliment for the city of Lewistown, and that's what they're trying to keep it as. Um, and RJ can do a much better job of telling you what an effect that has on a buyer who says, why would I pay fair market value for that if I don't know that I know that I'll be able to keep it out of the city, have my horses, shoot a pheasant, if I want to shoot a pheasant, do those things that you would do if you own fifty-six acres out there. Um, the letter, uh, that Doug wrote, excellent letter, good points. Let me tell you the effect it had, the buyer ran away. Because the buyer said, I hear you, but no, I'm not buying this piece of property that might be annexed. And what speaks louder unfortunately than this letter is the fact that the city already tried to annex it once. And the act litigation was the only thing that stopped the city from annexing it firsthand. I realize that it was pre-two thousand twenty-four and pre-growth plan, but either from now, you may have a completely different set of faces sitting at these tables and a different planner, and a different perspective. It would be more like the perspective that the planner and the city council had in two thousand fifteen, when they said, hey, let's annex that pro- piece of property. There's a heck of a lot of easy taxation right there, and it's on city water. It makes sense to be annexed through some view. So, that's, that's my point with saying, hey, can we just hold the status quo for twenty years? Just extend that agreement, because your current agreement, the two thousand fifteen agreement expires as soon as Jill Flument sells it. And that's, she's trying to give twenty years worth of assurance to a buyer that the city won't annexes for twenty years. Um, so that's what we've done. And again, those uh, smaller lots that are close to Casino, or excuse me, Castlebut Road, those uh, and as I look at them, they're probably much better candidates for annexation, buying and annexing when you think it's appropriate. I wouldn't comment on Doug, Doug mentioned on the Paper Trail Lane, that plot that was put up record uh, years ago in three, those five lots, would have had an easement on it in favor of those five lots. So, that easement is there. Um, if the owner ever sold them, the owner of the bigger parcel ever sold them, the easement goes with it. It's there. So, um, if, I should let RJ speak, he can do a lot better job of telling the council of the effect that this um, potential annexation has on buyers, and also, although excellent letter from Doug, um, it made the buyer run away. And I think it's gonna make any other buyer that's, is gonna pay for what fifty-six acres right here is worth of the fair amount.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, I mean, that's a rural piece of property, it's, it's close to town. If you guys aren't aware, where it's at, just bearin' it up, Castlebut Road, down to the bottom, has the creek running through it. Um, but it's a horse property, puts up some hay, you could run some cows, you could do whatever, but when it gets annexed into the city, you know, your ability to have a horse or chickens or cows or whatever might go away with that. I don't know anybody who would want to own a fifty-six acre lot in town, you can do country type things on.
Any of you have any questions?
Well, we'll open it up to questions from the commission, and after we have questions from the commission, we'll turn it over to the public. So, any questions from the commission?
Quick clarification, we are looking at five lots or more?
There's six parcels. There's five smaller lots, and there's one large lot that's approximately fifty-six acres.
The five lar- five smaller plots, I'm guessing they're on the hill. Uh, and they are officially annexed into the city currently.
I believe the two were.
No. Point, point of clarification, there are five smaller lots, but only two of them are in the existing city of Lewistown.
Okay, correct. So, three of the five are not annexed, and the large parcel is also not annexed.
And what's your.
And fur- and, and furthermore, the three smaller lots, which are still acreages, and the big lot are outside the service area or growth boundary that you all established in the recent land use plan. Meaning, it would actually be illegal for Lewistown to annex those parcels. But again, I think what I'm hearing from Chris and others is concerned that a future commission may change that line. Um, I guess my perspective on that is, it is a beautiful rural property, it does have the creek and riparian area running through it, it's wildlife habitat galore, but it's also flood plain, and it's also below the dam. And I think that all of those would be, have to be things that would be taken into consideration for the city to ever move the service area line to include the, Chris says fifty-some acres, my calculations was it sixty-seven acres. So, there's, for lack of a better word, a lot of line where it's at. Sometimes, when you establish a service area line where the city is interested in potentially serving with urban services and city services and eventually annexing, sometimes it's a little mushy where that line goes, and you have to make a judgment call. But from my vantage point, this was really an easy exercise to draw that service area line where it was drawn because of significant environmental constraints of that, of that, that larger parcel, and quite frankly, even the two parcels that are in the city from developing.
Okay, so I am currently hearing, and I just want to confirm this, that we're talking about the large sixty-seven to fifty is parcel, um, and it is not currently annexed. The city currently has no ambition to annex that, nor could we legally. And you are asking us to create amendment to the agreement that says we will not.
Annuate the large lot.
Annuate the large lot. For twenty years. And that number of years is? What, do we know why we say twenty years?
We, I was just picking the number that I was a reason.
Okay. And on the same page with.
Can I ask, maybe this is a technical question in the wrong direction, but enough attorneys in the room. So, back when the original agreement was put in place, it was based on, um, I, I believe the Flumets not wanting to file a waiver protest to annexation, or agreed in the way proposed to protest, as a condition of receiving a water service from the city, correct?
I.
Yeah.
So it says in this document.
Yes.
But I think it was back, because I think they took the water. Did they not take the water and then?
So, the water line was installed in about two thousand five vintage, up the road, so it went up the road.
Yeah.
And so that's where the water line and kind of the timeline, then fast forward ten years, and then the annexation.
Explain, um, the connection, you know, because the city needed the water line easements across their property, connect the water to the airport road area.
Uh, so they would have already probably secured that easement in the past. The annexation was tied to the water service, and then having access to the water service.
I guess my point was that, I think the Flumets gave the easement that allowed the water to get there.
Thank you.
And then they were offered the tap-in.
I believe that's, yeah.
But they were offered, just to be clear, they were offered the tap, the tap-in like anyone else if they agreed that they could be annexed.
Correct.
Correct? I mean, it's a, it's a.
Yes.
Quick, quick, you.
My understanding was, was not that, but I, I don't have the paper back enough. My understanding is they took the water, and then they were going, oh, by the way, we, here's a, uh, we're going to annex you, would you sign this waiver objection?
Okay.
It was.
So, a little fuzzy, a little fuzzy on the answering, regardless of that. So, any property that's within a certain distance of the city could, for some reason, be annexed.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yes.
To put a plot on this property and say, or bound on this property and say, it will not be annexed, period, based on this for twenty years, seems like a, going beyond what the rest of the residents adjacent to the city, they don't have that kind of protection from them. It seems like the original agreement to me was pretty straightforward, it's for the lifetime of these residents, as long as they live there, pretty straightforward, that's great. I understand there was a big debate over it, but they lost it back and forth, however it were. Um, so, is the concern that the sellers would have now being that, um, because of a water tap, there's a more like, it's more likely to be annexed? I mean, I live right next door to a property that is not annexed, but is not in the city, that has no protection from that, that could be annexed, if there was some reason the city had to annex it. My concern is, if, if the trigger, if the concern is the trigger of the water line, could an agreement be limited to that cause could not be used? I'm trying to find a middle ground. That cause could be, not be used to trigger annexation. But if, I don't know what the other issue might be, impossible to see for the next twenty years. But if something else came along that would be as, uh, as viable as the property next to my house, I don't know what that is. But it seems like we're putting a restriction on this that no other properties have, um, other than this issue of, uh, receiving a water service from the city. And so, could we narrow this to be based on only the water service to the city issue? Which would basically, in my mind, balance, balance this with every other adjacent landlord who's right. It would, it would almost take away the issue of the water service and just say, you're just like every other landlord adjacent to the city. I don't know if the city would agree to it.
They have, they do have water.
I get that. So.
But you can't say you have water, we're gonna annex you.
Fast, we're on, could you, could you simply say, you will not be subject to the water service from city annexation rights the city might feel it has after this agreement expires?
That would have to be with our attorney, we probably would have to go back a little bit. The, the history that I know, this line that he's referring to, there's two different lines.
Nikki, I'm gonna interrupt you, I'd say, I don't think it matters.
Okay.
It's, it's not an issue.
Well, but where they hooked up is.
But it doesn't, I don't want to re, re, litigate that. I'm simply saying, if the concern in selling the property is, well, there's a water line, and because there's a water line, the city could trigger an annexation, then what if we just laser out that piece in an agreement and say, because of a water line, that cannot be a trigger for annexation in and of itself? And therefore, the rest of the property, if, I mean, I, I would think it would put a restriction on a buyer that they couldn't. So, what's the reverse? Can the city then say, no, you cannot be annexed, you cannot, if you want to subdivide this and get services? No way, not for the next twenty years. I almost wonder if it's better to laser that one issue out and say, okay, let that part go, you can sell the property, it's not an automatic ex, there's not gonna be a trigger automatically upon the sale. It's just a, fine.
There isn't anyway, but there is a concern.
But, but it could happen, as I point, but it could happen with any property around the city for some reason that there's an, they, I don't know what it is.
Is this a very unique property in that it receives city water and is not annexed? Or is it the only one that exists that does receive city water?
There are other properties on the outskirts that receive city services, whether it's water or sewer, and are outside of the city.
Okay.
Have they agreed to, the waiver?
Well, many of them have signed the waiver.
That's the.
Yeah. Okay, so that's.
In this, in this case, the plans refuse to sign the waiver.
They did.
Correct?
That, I don't know.
Well, that, that's where you'd have to go back a little bit of the history, because.
Okay, did you say that somewhere in here?
Yeah, of what happened at that time.
We can hear that questions from the commission.
Doug, good. I just, it's not really a question, but it's sort of along the same vein, where the, um, the personal perspective is compelling, I guess, why they're asking this. Um, but from a pretty black and white perspective, it seems like the agreement was clear, we're not responsible for the, if financial benefit, as cold as that sounds, you know? Um, there doesn't seem to be a great reason to make an exception for them, and like you say, everybody else around, not giving the same thing. I get life change, but this was signed saying, you know, we get, it can be anything it wants to be after we're done with it, and that came sooner than they wanted, um, and they anticipated, which is hard to justify canceling this agreement or changing it, um, for that reason, you know? It just, it doesn't, doesn't seem as fair to the rest of the people around them, I guess. So, so it makes it tough. I get, I totally get why, I get wanting to keep that globally for the community and for, for buyers, but um, it's hard to justify on that basis.
Commissioner Rivers?
Usually, we get a map showing, um, the property we're talking about, especially when we, we have been petitioned to, before to allow property to be incorporated, and I wish we would have had that now. Uh, secondly, um, our city planner mentioned that the odds of that property, since it is outside the service area, uh, the possibility of it being annexed in the next twenty years is next to nothing. So, you can look at that from two different ways, one of which is, what's the harm of signing a twenty-year agreement, as Mr. Birdwell had suggested, if it's not gonna be annexed anyway? Other than, um, as mentioned, it's a good set of precedents. And I am not a fan of that reason, and I've told you that before. Uh, we have the authority to do what we're gonna do, what we need to do, and because it's a precedence, I don't like that leading me around, so that's just kind of where I'm standing in, yeah, right now at this particular minute, listening, okay?
Comments from the commission, we have some adjacent property owners here, could one comment?
I'm wondering if a twenty-year retraction, uh, uh, would affect adjacent property owners? Would that be something if, if we were to sell home, our home, which is adjacent, that we would have to disclose to keep us out of, uh, legal problems?
Well, we can't answer that question for you, that'd be, that's, that'd be, that's getting people advice here, so.
This affects a lot of our people and just, uh, really, never seen anything like it.
Really, and it is a beautiful piece of property, and I know there are, from the annexation, there were places that were annexed at that time that did not, I mean, they had their own private water system. There's property right next to, um, the Flument property that's not annexed, but you go down the road, on one side, not annexed, on this side, it's annexed, except for this house, and it's not annexed. So, there's not, there hasn't been like a, a consistent cut and dry on that annexation. So, extending this agreement, I mean, it's, I don't know that it's a new precedent, because I think there's some precedent on that, it's all. because I think there's some precedent on that's already been done regarding annexation.
Um, can you just state your name and address for the record, so that we have that?
Doug Johnson.
And Nikki Johnson, we're at 786 Castle.
Douglas Day, wedding to the West Side. I'm wondering if, I was waiting to address the issues. I, I heard that a lot of the concerns was using the property for hunting, fishing, and raising cattle or chickens and that kind of thing. Would a variance, give that cat another way? If the current owner or future owner could petition the city to have a variance, to, to have goats if they wanted, and that can be brought before the, the commission to say, this is a 56-acre piece of land, we wanna put a horse on it, can you give us a variance? Rather than saying can't annex it and treating that property different than everybody else? Just a thought.
I would come if the no buyers wanted to buy, hoping for something of their own. No buyers.
No, I understand. I just, I worry about treating different properties different, for, it opens up a Pandora's box of unfairness.
Yeah, and I, uh, again, I did, uh, provide an opinion to Ms. Phelps regarding this issue, and that, that's the biggest thing, is the precedents. If these agreements continue to be made, uh, what's, why wouldn't somebody else get the same treatment? And if, that's just a consideration for how to, how to move forward.
So, so in a world like, I, I get the no buyer's going to want to buy a piece of property with a question mark on it, i- is that possible, that a variance could be granted? Or something like that? A property that we, we're not gonna annex for us in the.
Not in the city limits, though the variance process would not.
The problem that I'm seeing is that these are all theoretical outcomes. There is no concrete, yes, this will happen, or no, this will not happen. And that, I think, is the most problematic point of it, because each side of the theory has merit and credence. But it is still just theory.
Can I ask, when we annex a place, we, can we just, like, take away all their current use rights? Or you have to red grandfather in what exists?
So, the existing use would be grandfathered as long as it's not discontinued for a period of eighteen?
So, the next buyer would be guaranteed of that, that if it came to that, we annexed it, they still can hunt and horse and fish all they want, until they, until they sell it?
Or, or it's discontinued.
Or they don't.
Um, but there is also opportunities for egg covenants, for conservation easements, those sort of things, that are really outside of our purview. But there are individual property rights that could apply.
And then I, I do wanna go back to the 2024 Lewistown Plan, that, again, it is a voluntary process. I, that was a very tough subject to communicate to the public, uh, through the process, that, uh, people get this, this scare when they read that 2024 plan, and feel like it's, oh, is this ever, is the block that's gonna take everything? But you have to always remember that, uh, it's, it's a voluntary process for annexation. Now, and Mr. Burwell understands the, the concern about the water use. But you've also had, you know, comment from our, our planning director, who knows his plan better than anybody in this room? The projections, the, again, the natural barriers that are on that property that just, annexation's just not in the sights, so.
Why was it in the stakes?
I, I can't, he can't speak for that.
It was in the sights, but that's, it's easy money, it's easy taxation of a very nice piece of property.
It had water. In all of those properties that were annexed, you know, why some are and some aren't, is because if they have water service, they were annexed. With the exception of the Flament property, which this agreement.
And, and I, I go with, uh, what Mr. Commissioner Robertson said. I mean, that, that history seems like we're all kinda fuzzy on what happened 10 years ago, but the fact is, right now, in 2025, we do have, uh, new legislation on how we're supposed to develop, and we have a plan that's been approved by the commissioners, and, uh, it's, it's really up to you how you want to move forward here.
And they are not the only large property owner next to town, or next to the city limits. And during the land use review time, there were multiple landowners that expressed that concern, and it was reiterated multiple times that annexation is voluntary.
Well, a lot of it was not concerned, but, um, a lot of desire was expressed to be included in the service area, uh, for these parcels, because it makes development more attractive, and the property's more valuable. So, we've seen both sides of the argument.
And then Doug pointed out that ultimately, it's kind of, is it like six of one? Half dozen of the other, is that, is that where we are? Good.
The other, the, the other, in terms of, if, if, one of the underlying themes I'm hearing here is predictability in the future of what would happen with the fifth, I'll just acquiesce and say, let's say it's 57 acres. My calculations could be off, I don't think so. Cause I've looked at this property upside down and forwards and backwards. But, um, is, it's actually now under the new Montana Land Use Planning Act that we're planning under, and our 2024 land use plan is developed under. It's actually illegal to annex land that's not zoned. If you're outside the service area, we will not be zoning that property. So that's another, if, if the issue is predictability of what will happen in the future of, of that big piece of property coming into the city, another layer of obstacle, and it's a significant one, is zoning. And the City of Lewistown does not have the authority to zone outside its city limits. So, that's another game stopper right there. Now, that said, that means that those two parcels that are in the city could, you know, they're all, again, annexation isn't even an issue, but they too are not zoned. So, one of the steps we have to do to bring our zoning code into compliance with the 2024 plan is to zone those areas of the city that are in the city but have never been zoned. And the Flament subdivision is one of those situations, the other one is Castle, Castle Ridge, and the other one is Roundhouse. And so, one of the next exercises you all as city commissioners will see is a new zoning code update that brings our zoning code into alignment with the 2024 Lewistown Plan. And part of that will be a new zoning map that proposes actual zones for the areas that are not currently zoned. If we don't do that, those parcels, even if they're in the city, cannot be annexed, or cannot be developed. It's actually, you cannot issue a permit. You would not even be able to issue a permit to build something in an area of the city that is in the city but is not zoned. So, Montana, with the Montana Land Use Planning Act, really has some fundamental changes than the situation 10 years ago when the agreement was forged.
Would, just a reiteration of that statement, clarify for possible landowners that want to purchase, that ultimately, that would be an illegal action for us to go and try to annex it?
But you could zone it and annex it.
The two, the two plots that are currently in the city limits.
You can't, cannot zone outside of the city limits, current city limits, and you can't change that based on the Land Use Planning Act without changing the community's land use plan. So.
So, you're a multi-step process, but you could, you could get it done.
We could, in, in three years, it could be changed.
Three and a half, in three and a half years, you could take that up, you could change that, you could zone it, you have to be pretty clear to, to wanna do that.
Yeah, it could be done.
And it's a public process and stuff, yeah.
And I, and I wanna ask this again, make sure I'm clear. So, there are some properties receiving water service that have not signed the waiver though?
Yeah, we have waiver, but they are not annexed.
All that are serviced?
I believe so.
I was here when, when this all started, and when it all transpired. And I voted no on the annexation, because no one was very clear on what was going where. And I, I'm sorry, I did not, I have a, a book, it's full of all the annexations business that went on.
It was busy, is what I remember.
Oh, it was busy.
There was a lot of annexation.
But we never got any of the zoning done. Our city planner, she moved on, and, um, and we had several meetings to get everything zoned, and like I say, she left before we ever got anything zoned up there.
Any other questions or comments from the commission, or comments from the public?
Thank you for, I just wanna say thanks for listening, it was a good discussion.
Is there a motion on the table, or, not on the table, but somebody recommended a motion, or? Any discussion, any? Any direction needed, or?
Under Robert's rules of order, I do believe we need to make a motion, and then it's up to, uh, us commissioners to pass it or defeat that motion. Am I correct?
If there's no ma- motion made, then nothing happens. So, you can make a motion, it can be seconded, you can vote on it, and it can fail that way. Or if nobody wants to put a motion together, it, it's just done, it won't.
It doesn't happen.
It doesn't happen, and it won't be brought back before the commission until it's asked for again. But you do have.
The motions not have to be made.
Nope. Well, I'll, I'll make a motion, um, but to disapprove the amendment, just to see it as being the benefit of the, the city, the community, city.
We have a motion from Commissioner Speaker, we have a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Is there more questions from the commission, or anything that?
To confirm the motion, it is, in essence, to deny the amendment to the agreement. Keep the, keep the agreement in place. And in denying the amendment, we would not attach the agreement back onto that property for 20 years. It would stay as it is.
Existing as it is.
And when the property is sold, they will be treated as every other citizen in that. The donut. Uh, in that, I think they're out of the donut. Okay, just to confirm.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay. So, our motion is to disapprove the amendment to the agreement, or deny amendment to the agreement that is in place. Commissioner Mueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Motion cut.
Thank you.
Thank you, just for presenting.
Thank you.
Item number two is discussion and action on approving resolution 4211, a resolution approving an application from the Lewistown Downtown Association for TIP funds made to the Lewistown Tax and Income Financing District. City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yes, um, so you heard a bit about, uh, the Lewistown Downtown Association and their grant application, uh, for a downtown master plan. They also went to the TIP board, um, to request, uh, partial funding on the project. The TIP board did approve a grant for up to $20,000 to be utilized for the master plan. And so, that's what you have in front of you tonight.
Great presentation, lots of reading, was really well done, and demand for this plan, and maybe other comments wanna be made regarding this, it's probably pretty fresh.
I'd like a big motion to approve. Resolution 4211.
Second.
Perfect. And commission, uh, motion from Commissioner Robertson, a second from Commissioner Mueller. Any other questions regarding approving this application? Commissioner Rubes?
So, the Lewistown Downtown Master Plan Development indicates here that they need $100,000 to plan a development?
That's what the esti- the high-end estimate is, uh, to develop that plan, yep.
Okay.
She said between 80 and 100.
Okay. And then $5,000 for administration of the grant?
Correct.
That they, have they, have they applied that grant yet?
Uh, their application will go in here shortly, yep.
Do you like the 14th, I can remember? Okay, any other comment from the commission, questions, or from the public?
It's clear, and then, this requires a, a local match. And, and so, these dollars would be a local match to this grant. Okay.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, um, we are approving resolution number 4211. Commissioner Mueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Item number three is discussion and action on approving resolution number 4212, a resolution approving an application from Broadway Building LLC for TIP funds made to the Lewistown Tax and Income Financing District Board. City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, um, so also, at a recent, uh, TIP Ted Board meeting, uh, the Makers Mount Broadway presented a grant application, uh, for window replacement, masonry repair, and facade painting of their building located at, on Sixth and Broadway? Um, 519 West Brava, please, sir. And, uh, the project is quite expensive, they've continued to do a lot of work, and so, the TIP board, uh, did recommend approving a TIP grant of $20,000 for the project.
So, they referred to the Salsas Broadway Building?
That's what their LLC is.
Their LLC is, okay, so it's not, doesn't need to be mortared, his neighbors don't vote for it?
No, no, and it's in there as, I think, DVA, yep.
And their construction company will be doing the work?
No.
No.
That was a question that we all discussed. They are not doing work. They put it, it, it looks a bit like that in this one, but they showed us estimates from other contractors that are actually doing the work. I think because he's a contractor, he's someone that all the time, orderly. And that's what gave it that appearance. Cause I was the first one that said, you can't do this, if he's gonna do the work himself.
That was the other questions I had. Any other questions?
I approve resolution 4212, resolution approving an application from Broadway Building LLC for TIP funds made to the Lewistown Tax and Income Financing District.
Second. Can we have a motion? Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Mueller, a second from Commissioner Speaker. Any other questions from the commission? Any comments from the public? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
We are approving resolution number four two one two. Commissioner Mueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, all right, item number four, discussion and action on the second reading ordinance number one seven seven four, an ordinance amending ordinance number one seven three three, codified as the Louisville Town City Code Section seven two one, adopting the twenty twenty one International Fire Code and authorizing the city attorney to confer the same. City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, um, so this is the second reading of this ordinance, uh, where we would adopt the fire code, uh, the same fire code as the state of Montana adopted and sub- or amended and then subsequently adopted. Uh, we have to adopt the same code, uh, with the exception of we can be more restrictive, not less. And so you can see, um, we do have some, uh, provisions in there that are limit the size of propane tanks and tend to set the limits and stuff like that, uh, that are more restrictive. Uh, but these are existing modifications that have been in the previous codes too. So no significant changes from the existing code with the exception of just updating.
Why is so much taken out?
Um, I, I can speak for that. When, uh, these codes come out, they come in these big, big books and they have adoption recommendations at the front. And so for the old code, uh, the city attorney had laid out a bunch of different, uh, like definitions and things like that. As I was going through it, uh, by referencing the code that does contain these, and now we, I can certainly redraft that and put them back in. But again, by referencing it, uh, and speaking with the, uh, uh, fire chief, that this is basically how they want to adopt this, how the code recommends to adopt it.
I was just curious.
Yep.
More simplistic, right?
And then, uh, I do want to note too, um, this rule twenty three point twelve point six oh one of the administrative rules of Montana, uh, that, that's geared, that comes from the state fire chief. So they, that's coming down from the state, down how the state of Montana does it. So we are adopting it the way that the state wants us to as well.
And so they go through a very lengthy process to amend that fire code. And so that's what the A and R and stuff, uh, does. Um, for example, um, you know, amending where residential fires for, for, are not required in the state of Montana, things like that. So those are removed from the documents, um, in its entirety based on the state of Montana. Just an example.
Let me read through the second reading ordinance, number seventeen seventy four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker and a second from Commissioner Mueller. Any other questions from the commission, from the public, comments? Let's do a roll call vote.
We are approving the second reading of ordinance number seventeen seventy three. Commissioner Mueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
What's up, Mr. Frank? You said seventeen seventy three. Would it have been seventeen seventy four as word?
Oh, yes, I wrote the wrong one down. Sorry.
Okay.
We're approving or second reading of ordinance number seventeen seventy four. Commissioner Mueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
All right, item number four, discussion on establishing. Did you say four?
You did.
Item number five. Item number five, discussion and action on establishing a procedure for civil infraction and discussion on which ordinances it should be, it should apply to. City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, um, so this is something we've discussed in the past. Tyler is here with us tonight and he'll speak more about what civil infraction is, the benefits of it. Um, what we are looking forward tonight, if we do like the direction, um, or the approach, uh, what codes may that apply to, uh, knowing that that will then require us to amend all of those ordinances. So.
That's right. Uh, would you like me to take you over here? All right, so the authority for a civil infraction comes from MCA seven dash one dash four one five zero. Uh, basically allows a city to enact an ordinance that would designate certain acts as a civil infraction. And what the benefit from, from what I've seen for the issues that pop up in, in the city, um, I think we would benefit from this process because what it, it does, it takes you out of the criminal code. Um, the way our city code is currently written is that, uh, we dump it to what's called our general penalties and basically says that if you violate an ordinance, that's a misdemeanor. Looking at it, that might be a little harsh for some things. I mean, we're talking garbage issues, some, some dog issues. Uh, there might be better ways to, parking, perfect example. Um, there's better ways to handle it. Uh, so with a civil infraction, that actually takes away a right to a jury trial. And the reason I want to, uh, uh, suggest this to the commission is that I'm not trying to take away someone's right to a jury, but uh, some things don't need to be tried in front of a juror, a jury, like, uh, say a cat at large issue or a parking ticket, things like that. Uh, so I'm looking, I'm trying to think of big picture. Uh, is there a way to help try to curb these issues that are out there, but not have it be so punitive and also help relieve some resources for the city? In other words, me not having to pull 20 people out of our community to talk about cats running around. I, I just don't think there's good optics for, for issues like that. Now, they're important issues. I'm not trying to say that, you know, animals at large, parking, garbage, I'm not trying to say those aren't issues, but I think there's better ways we can handle them. Um, and what the civil infraction does too is it, it kind of opens up the, the remedies for the court. It puts it in the civil world. Uh, we, I would like to write in there what's called a, a civil nuisance, uh, basically, or a public nuisance, I should say. Uh, that's, that can be applied to things like, uh, you know, chronic dogs at large, uh, chronic issues with trash being spread around, you know, the neighborhood, things like that. Uh, what that would do is that open up the door for, uh, the judge, Judge Mantu, to have different, different remedies other than, say, you know, justify and possible contempt of court. Uh, we could ask for things like injunctions, you know, pick up your trash, uh, put you in, in the, in the alleyway. You know, there, there'd be things we could ask for that we could get them what we want out of it. But also again, uh, saying, hey, we want this, uh, we want a misdemeanor on this guy's record. We want, uh, to go through this big criminal process. So that, that's a thought I had that would help with those issues. And then we, we would, uh, as Holly said, uh, we have to decide, decide which issues this could apply to. And also, this doesn't have to be the only remedy. Um, for example, with the, the garbage, uh, ordinance, we have a, a process where you give the landlord, you know, at novice and say thirty days, correct this issue. As an option. So we could have some discretion on how we want to impose this civil infraction. So I, I just think it's a, a good way to handle these, uh, these issues that need to be addressed, but not as punitive. And again, doesn't, it, it helps out with the resources. Um, and then going through it, my, my thoughts, um, again, the, the authority for a civil infraction basically says that you can designate pretty much any crime. It can't be any crime that's on the books, but, uh, there's certain things that we could de- designate as a civil infraction. Uh, one that I see come up all the time is a right of way violation. And with right of way violations, uh, that's, those are really tough tickets that officers are dealing with because it's usually, you know, somebody blew a stop sign or, you know, didn't yield at the intersection. And then it's, you know, it creates this big issue of who's at fault and the officer's just writing a ticket. And then they show up to my office and we fight about it because, um, they feel the officer's already said liability and that just becomes a huge issue. And then these folks don't get attorneys either because they're these, like a right of way violation, uh, that doesn't come with jail time attached to it. And so I, I deal with public law, which I don't mind dealing with public by any means. But I, I feel like, say, if we could have a mechanism to write, you know, these, these lower level traffic tickets, um, where it's not triggering, you know, judge trials, pre-trial conferences, things like that, where I think it'd be, uh, it might be receptive from the community a little bit more as well, where it's, again, it's not as punitive, but it addresses issues.
Does it pull it out of most court, like justice court even?
Well, it's, so it's, it'd still be through the city court with Judge Mantu. And then there's some issues with, uh, like surcharges, saying if we get a judgment, because this wouldn't be a conviction.
No.
So say we get a judgment against somebody, um, they would still have to assess the surcharges. Most of it would still have to be collected by and distributed to this state and the funds that they all go to. Uh, but again, it'd be under the jurisdiction of the city court. Uh, Judge Mantu could be hearing it and, uh, he'd, he'd make the ruling on it.
And then do other communities around Montana utilize this for these very similar penalties, basically?
The, the big municipalities all do it. Um, again, it's a numbers thing for them too, where they don't want to be, uh, pulling their officers in and pulling their prosecutors in for jury trials on, you know, traffic tickets and stuff.
Okay. And do you see communities of ours signs utilizing this?
Um, I did research that actually. I could certainly look into that, get some more info on that. But it's, uh, certainly allowable by law, certainly put into place around the state.
Is the, is there still a right to appeal?
There is. Yep, so that.
That kicks it up the district court?
Yep, yep. And that'd have to be, uh, it'd be the same as a criminal case, uh, be based on legal issues. Uh, they wouldn't get a new trial. Uh, Judge Perry would just be reviewing what happened in the lower court.
Okay. Would, uh, is there, is jail time an option or does not an option within this?
Nope. And then the, uh, what ordinances we're talking about don't have jail time in the first place because that goes toward general penalty, which is a $500 fine. Um, so really, the way I look at it, it would be opening the door to say, again, get that nuisance type claim. And then the way a nuisance claim under these infractions, say, say we have a garbage issue and this person is, will not pick up, finally we're sending the city down to clean it up. Uh, we could ask the court to assess the cost of cleanup against them. That gets attached to, attached to the tax bill, just like you can with the current process, except we're going through, we're actually asking for restitution through the court. And that'd be a court order that, that could convert into a judgment, get attached to the tax bill, and do other things with it.
Since I'm understanding correctly, the shift, like the big win-win out of this is like not eliminating those needs for juries?
That'd be a big one. Because it's, it's hard for me to justify, again, uh, you know, 20 some people from the community to come and help enforce this. Again, I think it's an important issue, some of these things we're talking about. But I think there's better ways to enforce it. And again, it's less punitive, uh, because it wouldn't register for the, uh, the respondent, if you would, uh, wouldn't register as a misdemeanor. So it does take away that those teeth, if, and that, we want to be clear on that, that again, it, it wouldn't pop up, I'll say, their criminal record. But again, that's where I also think this is, it's more of a, uh, it's more of a civil issue and move it away from the criminal issue. Uh, because, you know, parking's typically not a criminal issue.
Right.
It's, it's a nuisance. You know, it's, uh, the people that are taking up spaces that are supposed to be for other people. Do they need a criminal record for that? Not, I don't think so, but.
Criminal partner.
But, um, the, uh, what, again, what I like court too is it, it allows the court to enter defaults, things like that. Um, with the criminal side of things, to do a quote unquote default for a ticket like this, somebody has to post a bond, uh, prior to doing so. Uh, so if there's no bond posted on, on a ticket, the judge can't forfeit that bond. That's what it's called when they, uh, just don't show up. Um, for some tickets, non-jailable offenses, traffic tickets, the judge, if he has a bond, just forfeit. Um, so this one, uh, say they don't necessarily post a bond, well, we could still go through the process, get a default, and we have our remedy.
So ordinances don't necessarily have to be, like, rewritten? It's just the way that they're.
So we, I, I have to look at.
The lines changed or each one would have to be individual?
We have to designate each one as a civil infraction.
Okay.
I think it'd be best practice to put it right in that code.
Yep.
I don't like doing, all these codes are considered civil infractions over in the civil, because that's too cumbersome for regular folks to just figure out what it means. But it, it would have to be an amendment, so there would be some work too. Uh, again, that's the importance of figuring out which ones would be, uh, be affected by this.
Would this save, um, police officers' time as far as court appearances and paperwork that have to do?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, um, there is potential for a judge trial. Um, the time spent on a judge trial is way, way, way less than a jury trial, even in misdemeanor land. Uh, mid, in, for misdemeanors, a jury trial typically is done in a day. That's usually an eight to five sort of deal. But, um, I, the police department much rather pay overtime for a half hour trial. It would only shorten up, uh, two hours of overtime rather than, uh, the entire day for the officers.
Do it for everything we can. That's my rule.
And, and again, this wouldn't apply to any sort of, uh, jailable offense. That, that just goes through the regular process, regular ticket. We not, we go to the circuit on that. So just trying to get the, the low ball stuff that we can hopefully be, hopefully a little businesslike too. Uh, because when people get charged with a ticket, they don't like it, obviously. So it's, uh, you know, uh, it's taken as an insult, as an affront to them. Um, so this could potentially lower some controversy with that for, instead of, you know, creating a cause to fight against, maybe you could try to, hey, we've got a problem, how can we fix it? Not, okay, you're going to be charged with a misdemeanor. Um, do you want a jury trial or a bench trial?
A, a right of way violation now gets you points against your driver's license, doesn't it?
Uh, yes, it should. Yep, that should be two points.
This, uh, civil infraction would not do that?
Uh, that would, if we designated it that way, that the right of way violation could still be reported to the state, uh, to the DMV, Department of Justice.
Okay.
Uh, so to clarify on that, what happens in court isn't always the same as what happens at the state level for different agencies, like the Department of Justice, the way they handle records is very different from how a court handles them. And they're, they, they're going to do what they want. And so that would still, it'd be a right of way violation under the sixty one code, but considered a civil infraction that could still be reportable to the state. And the, the DMV loves picking up those things and putting them on the records. So, um, they're, they're going to find a DUIs, they're, they're going to find these things too.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission, from the public? Sure. See, I'll tell you how long the jury, it is a great idea for no particular reason.
So, um, just real quick, the areas of interest I saw, I would think, the parking, again, um, I call them right of way violations, uh, and any sort of not moving type, uh, vehicle charges. There's a, a handful of them out there. Um, that would not include something like careless driving, reckless driving, that again, any of this, a little more of that's today's, this regular route. Um, pets, that's the biggie that we're working on, garbage, and possibly like sign violations. I don't think those come up very much, but uh, again, just kind of going through, trying to think of that. What areas does this need appropriate for?
Sounds dead.
All right.
So the next step, what do you bring back on list of, here's what we like to apply it to, or how does that, what's the next step?
Next step would be a draft of an ordinance for you. So you can take a look at what the actual layout of the civil infraction, how that would read in your book. And then probably just an example, or, or to the, how, how to amend the ordinance, like, uh, it'd basically just be a one liner, saying this is considered, can be considered a civil. a one liner, saying this is, can be considered a civil infraction under. I thought the code would make sense to put it in Title I, Chapter Three, under a new Section Four. So the, right now we have, that one dash three has like the general penalties. And I thought it makes sense to just put it in there, make it number four, or we could renumber the other ones too, but we'd stick it in there, I thought that'd be an appropriate spot.
So one time we had an ordinance committee created within our commission. So how does that kind of weigh in with this?
Should I?
That's something that
We still utilize that.
Yeah, we do.
Many of these are still codes that we've been discussing, which is kind of why this is very timely. On my list, I have a building code and also our fencing codes, things like that, that again, should not be criminalized.
But
Is this timeframe wise, are we talking 2026, kind of?
Oh, no, no.
Or no?
Working on it, hopefully for, possibly the next one, next meeting, so. Yeah, I've got more time devoted to you.
Because currently we have Commissioner Rube, myself, and Commissioner Terry on that committee. And if anybody is interested in
Well, how about
We can trade out if we needed to.
What, who?
Well, I was just thinking, I don't, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Terry, but it was Commissioner Rube, myself, and Commissioner Terry, but if for some reason she wasn't interested, Commissioner Robertson says he's welcome to sit on it.
We just can't have more of them.
Right, yeah, just quote down.
I think Commissioner Rube and Commissioner Terry aren't long for this city commission. He says he wants to accomplish it before your terms.
Yeah.
Let's get it done.
You're not done yet. Her favorite area.
Let's get it done, yes, ordinances.
You don't, you don't get to rush until the first of the year.
January one.
Going to take all we can get out of you.
So Commissioner Day, may I email you?
That'd be great, yeah. And I'll reach out to Commissioner Terry and see what her interests is along that. And we have a beautiful backup if you need him. Awesome, all right, we're going to move on to citizen requests. Good, all right, Commissioner Minutes, let's start on this end with Commissioner Hewitt.
I just apologize for not bringing all of my annexation stuff because it probably would have helped answer a lot of questions because I'm the only one that was on the commission at that in fact, I'm going to go home and take you out.
Just some light reading.
Yes.
Commissioner Rube?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Robertson?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Bueller? Okay.
Pressure's on, no, I know.
Come on, you gotta find someone.
I feel like I missed a great meeting last week, last time. I'm sure it was a great recording somewhere. I thought you should go watch that. It's popcorn. No, I don't have anything.
I just wanted to ask if we, on the comments for the city manager report at the open house, is that something we can invite new commissioners to?
That's thinking.
That kind of way, you're okay, perfect. And then also, yeah, we like 20 or something. And then just wanted a reminder that we'll be having the city manager evaluation on December first, Monday, 3:00 PM. The location will still be determined in the mail. And I have nothing to report either, just thank you. Anything for good order? Take this meeting in turn.